America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Yes.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God, indivisible.
Invisible.
With liberty and justice.
For all.
For all.
This meeting is being recorded for district purposes. It is or may be published in part or in its entirety on the district's website without the express permission of meeting participants. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Angus?
Here.
Mr. Campbell Long?
Here.
Mrs. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Keough?
Here.
Mrs. Meganello?
Yeah.
Mr. Metz?
Here.
Ms. Pedego?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Can I have the sunshine law, please?
The Board of School Directors held an executive session on Wednesday, February 17th to discuss personnel matters, matters subject to attorney-client privilege and other confidentiality laws.
Thank you. Any correspondence this evening?
Um, yes, we have correspondence that were already circulated to the board and just to summarize some of the comments, Brenda Protola-Pac Economy has three children in the district and is asking the board to please return the kids to the classroom, if not full-time, at least hybrid model. Danielle Zache, Ambridge, what will it take for you to allow students back into the schools five days a week? The CDC recommends schools to be open and deemed schools safe for students. The numbers in Beaver County are significantly lower than last, last board meeting. I am asking that you consider sending another survey asking parents if they would send their kids back fully or stay remote. If you are concerned about class size, why do furlongs continue to be the solution to our budget problem? Keep the teachers and slim down the class sizes. Give parents a say in their children's education. Vicky Fried Baden, not only do the high school students need to return to in-person instruction, but they need to go more than two days a week. If the elementary school students can return to hybrid and schools larger than ours can return full-time. These teenagers have more of an emotional, social, and psychological reason to return to in-person instruction and not just hybrid. In addition, there is a need to permit field trips and concerts at the high school level. Sports have resumed and students have been participating following strict guidelines. For the students in the music program, that is their sport. It should be the students' decision to participate in all these activities and attend school in person full-time. It is your responsibility to provide the opportunity to them in a safe manner in their choice to participate. Shannon Sims Harmony Township, Mrs. Sims sent to the board a reopen petition with 260 signatures. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Pascarella, would you like to address now or present the findings from the committee, whichever is easier for you or whichever you prefer?
Whatever you would like, Mrs. Fisher. I know that it is on the agenda for me to do that presentation, I believe, but if you'd like me to do it now, I surely could do that.
Go ahead.
Okay. Could you pull that up, please, June? These are our notes from, for tonight, and they're the updated members of our committee. Go ahead, June. Up first, just as a reminder, these are the PDE recommendations, and you can see that if you have more than a hundred cases per thousand in your county, you would be substantial, which we still, we still are. Our positivity rate in the county has dropped a little bit, but we still are. Can you go to the next slide? This kind of shows you the most recent for our county at 148.2, still would place us in substantial. Go ahead to the next slide. There was mention about CDC and their new, their new operational strategies for K-12, so I'll go over this briefly. I do want to make a point that all the superintendents in a couple counties were on a call this week, and the folks from Pennsylvania Department of Education are reviewing this. They have not adopted this yet, but they are reviewing it. One thing that I'd like to point out here is they've kind of increased or the number of sections, at least from CDC, you could see low, moderate, substantial is now 50 to 99. And then you have high transmission, which would be over greater than 100. So at this given point, if, if PDE adopted this, we would be in high transmission at this point. Could go to the next slide. If you look at this, and again, PDE did not, you know, approve of this yet, but they're reviewing it. If you do look at that, you would see that we would currently be in the high transmission in which it says elementary schools would be in a hybrid mode using physical distance of six feet or more required. And then you would see that at the, excuse me, let me just move my pictures here so I can read that. Then you would see that the middle and high schools would be virtually only instruction unless they can strictly implement all mitigation strategies and have few cases. Schools that are already open for in-person instruction can remain open, but only if they strictly implement mitigation strategies and have few cases. So this has not been adopted by PDE yet, but they are reviewing it. But these are the new CDC guidelines, which we reviewed with both our committee, and I just want to make sure that it is reviewed with the entire board. You can go to the next slide, June. A little bit of a reminder as part of our attestation form that if we do have a certain number of cases, then we would have to shut down for a certain amount of time. That is something that we're required to do. This would be for small buildings with less than 500, which would basically be all of our elementary buildings. So you could see there that depending on the cases, I won't read that all to you, but if you look, if we are in substantial and we get a certain number of cases, you would then see that we would, we would close down for those amount of days listed. Two to four, and then you could see five or more. Go to the next one. For our medium and, oh, yep, there we go. For our medium, which would be our high school and our middle school. You could see here that those numbers slightly increase for the number of folks that would need to be tested positive for COVID-19 in the 14-day period, rolling period. And if that was the case, it shows you how long you would shut down. So the larger the building, the more cases according to them they would have before you had to shut down in the rolling 14-day average. And you could see we'd still be in substantial at this given point, so that's what we would follow. Next slide. So our full reopening committee met yesterday, and just to give you some highlights after a lot of good dialogue and everyone respectfully sharing their opinion, this is what was voted on and recommended to the group. There was a split vote from the committee members on opening of the Ambergeria School District's elementary schools with additional instructional days. With 20 of the committee members voting to remain the same in our current hybrid instruction and to review as a committee again in early to mid-March. With five of the voting members to increase the number of days of the elementary students with a tent. There was discussion on that, whether that was, you know, adding a Friday or having students go more days a week than the two hybrid days. There was also a split vote from the committee on the opening of the Ambergeria School District's middle school and high school to return to a full hybrid instruction with 13 voting to allow the students in six to 12 to attend hybrid instruction. And with 12 voting to remain the same way with allowing only special education and ESL students to attend higher hybrid while the other students attend virtual. So on that one, our committee did vote to allow six to 12 to move to, everyone would be able to attend hybrid. PDE, just as a note, as I said, has not made any changes to their recommendation as recently as Tuesday, I believe that was, when we had the meeting at nine o'clock. But this, our committee did vote that way. The board would need to vote to decide what models the students would return in and on what date. I put March 1st, 2021 question mark for the whole board because it was discussed both from representatives and food services, administration, teachers and staff, that giving a little bit more time to be able to make sure that we're completely prepared would be beneficial. Ultimately, that is your decision, and we will be scheduling another date as we have every, every time for the full reopening committee to meet, meet again prior to the March voting board meeting. And that concludes my report. Mrs. Fisher.
Thank you, Dr. Pascarella. I'd just like you to open it up for board discussion for any questions, for those of us that were, you know, included on the committee and looking for some feedback here. For some discussion.
So we're talking about voting for tonight, correct?
If we so choose to make a motion, we can do that this evening, yes. One of the things that we, as, as, you know, a few of the board members discussed, suggested in the meeting was looking at the elementary level, possibly adding that Friday in every other Friday for Garnet and Garnet and Gray. And, and of course, we also discussed the return of the, of our secondary students. Do you have any input there, Mr. Campbell Long or anybody else?
Well, I mean, I'd like to make a motion to add the Friday in for elementary and open, I would say, six through 12.
Our secondary.
At least, at least hybrid, at least hybrid, if not include, if not include that third day in there.
I will second that.
Was that Mrs. Curtis?
I said I will second that.
Thank you.
Please send it back for hybrid, please.
Okay, can, can I? I'm not sure who's this. Solicitor Turnbull?
Yeah, and just to clarify the motion, just so the board kind of understands what it is on the table, I just want to clarify, is, is it the motion on the table, Mr. Campbell Long and Mrs. Curtis to have, does the motion include the, the Friday addition to the hybrid, the, the prior hybrid traditional model? For the, for the, for six through 12?
Well, no, I mean, I could amend that to just saying for the original hybrid model for six through 12 with the addition to the Friday for elementary.
Okay.
Some of that discussion that we had was that the Fridays actually give us, if we keep Fridays off, then if we run that 14 days, that equals your three-day, the 24-hour wait, and then the two-day closure. So it may even be more beneficial to bring the elementary kids back four days, Monday through Thursday, keep Friday remote, and then have that window in case we would have to close because of higher numbers. And then you're not picking and choosing which Friday, so that would also help parents who have to figure out every other Friday which day their kids were coming. So some of the concern of the committee was our kids have trouble even what day they come on the Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday. So that was some of their concern with rotating the every Friday also.
Ms. Turnbull, question there in regards to the attestation form. Can you, can you just give a little update on, on that if we were to choose to go with the four-day, how that would affect that and if, in fact, we could not successfully socially distance? Can you just give us a little background, some feedback?
I'm happy to. So there is a, we are operating under a PDE, PDE order and a Department of Health order from, probably from December of 2020. And that required every school district to, to make an attestation, or in other words, a written promise signed by the superintendent and the board president relative to operations, at least under this current order until there's a change. That attestation requirement states that the district will unequivocally enforce and require the universal masking order. So that's one component of it, and the, the second component of the attestation is that the district promises that in the event that, that students are returned in either a hybrid or, or, or a full offering of, of classes, that the district will faithfully enforce some of those, those grids that Dr. Pascarella just shared that relate to closures in the event of COVID-positive cases identified in any of its buildings, whether they are students or staff or a combination of the two. And so what you, Mrs. Meganello just kind of referenced, the 14-day rolling average and this idea of closures for, for three, for minimums of three-day periods, that all relates to that attestation and our requirements by PDE in the event that, that cases increase and, and what, what our obligations are in each of those steps. So the attestation and the requirements right now do not foreclose the possibility of, of hybrid education as directed by the school board, but it does create some, some new, you know, probably some increased likelihood of increased cases as more students and more people are kind of brought back into buildings. So with, with that, the, the board is free to, to legislate as, as it sees appropriate.
Thank you. I just would like to give a little feedback, and I'll ask Dr. Pascarella to step into as well from some of the building principles and some concern for the staff members as far as putting the full class sizes back. Dr. Pascarella, can I ask you to just weigh in on some of the feedback that we did receive from some of our building principals?
Well, I, I do know this much. If you are stating that, I mean, the original motion that I heard from Mr. Campbell Long and Mrs. Curtis, that you were going to do hybrid and for elementary, and then you were going to rotate Friday every other day, that would still allow for social distancing in that regard. And at the high school level and middle school level, the six to 12 going back to a hybrid would also allow for social distancing. If, I'm not going to speak, I mean, I, I got the general gist. I won't speak for the principals per se, but I will tell you from my perspective, you know, I have really, 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 really great concern about bringing every student back and not being able to socially distance those students in the room. I, I, I would not recommend that, and quite frankly, I have to say on the record that I, I oppose that and make sure that's in the minutes because I think that that's not following the guidance that we've been said about keeping people six feet apart. I understand Mrs. Turnbull, from the legal perspective, says that you could do that, but I'm not sure how you'd fit all of the students into the classroom and keep them six feet apart. So that's, that's my opinion on that, but I didn't hear that in the original motion. I understand the motion might be amended. And the only other question, comment I would say is that if you are going to do that, would you be able to include in your motion one way or another, the start date of that, please? Thank you.
So do we, do we have any information from other districts that are going more full-time? With any signs of what their cases have been, if they've had an increase or anything like that? Have you guys, you know, being at a superintendent meeting and things like that, have you heard anything like that?
I would say that there's at least one county school that I was aware of that has recently had to shut down due to the number of COVID cases per the attestation form that they had. I, I am aware of one that did that. I'm not sure exactly how far they were into the in-person. You know, as far as the, the numbers and in-person, and if they were socially distanced or not, I couldn't, I couldn't respond to that for sure, but I do know just from talking to other people that there, there is a county school that is shut down or did have to shut down for, for some time due to that.
Was that their elementary, Joe?
The best I know was the high school and middle school.
Okay.
But I don't want to be, you know, I, I can't be quoted. I just saw that, you know, in, in conversation in the chat.
Right.
Ms. Turnbull, would we need to separate that motion for secondary and primary? Keep that separate?
As a...
I'm just trying to clarify.
As I say, as a, as a legal matter, no, you don't have to, but if that is, if, if, if the board believes that's a more efficient and effective way to kind of deal with those different groups, then with the permission of, of Mr. Campbell Long and Mrs. Curtis, as the, the party's making the motion that's currently on the floor, if they, if they consented to, to the separation of that motion, then, then it could, those two component parts could be considered in serial, like one, one after another.
Yeah, I don't have a problem in separating those.
Okay.
I think they should be separated.
Yeah.
I agree. I think, I think they should be as well.
Okay. It might help with the, with the, with, with the discussion because they're different. Yep. So the, the Garnet and Gray and every other Friday for elementary and then for secondary, it would be if I, if I'm going to school Monday, Wednesday, Friday one week, and then the, the other set of children go Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, the next week. Right? Like you're only going to school on Friday every other week?
Correct.
Okay. I, I just feel like, first of all, I appreciate the, all of the public comment, and I, I think that this is just one of the most difficult things that most of us will face as far as making decisions when it comes to this. The reason why I am in favor of hybrid is because of the co, the co-mingle, like it, it allows the administration to separate the students, so there isn't co-mingling. I think increasing in-person days is something I would be in favor for, but I just, I, I worry about not having the control of being able to have one group of students that's always together and another group of students that's always together. So that's, that's just my opinion when I think about contemplating this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Pedego. Board members, any, anybody else have any, anything they would like to add?
I would agree with the hybrid for the secondary, the grade six through 12, where really when we look at Butler County, who has moved to moderate, and with Beaver County are, in the past seven days, Butler County had 232, Beaver had 272. So the 40 people are what we're talking about of substantial and moderate at this point. So we are close to the moderate. And I think staying in the hybrid for that six through 12, who we know have had an increased number, then our elementary students would be a good move. But I am in favor, full-heartedly, of four days a week for our elementary students, K-5, where they would be there having Friday off.
Thank you, Mrs. Meganello. Anybody else?
Friday remote, sorry. Friday remote, not off.
Right. Any other board members?
I would agree with Denise having the four days in and the Friday being remote for our elementary and our secondary and high school going back just hybrid for right now.
Anyone else, any comments before we? Go ahead, Megan. Did you have, Ms. Turnbull, did you have something to add?
I just wanted to check. So the motion relative to elementary right now from Mr. Campbell Long, seconded by Mrs. Curtis, was hybrid plus the, with the Friday addition, that was, that's the, that's the current motion on the table. Was there a motion to amend that, that first component for elementary to consider something else?
We also need a date there, I believe, to, once we...
Is there a motion to amend that, that primary motion?
Are you asking?
Yeah, the January 22nd, Monday start for the middle and high school students.
February 22nd?
Yeah, the 22nd, Monday.
February. So...
As far as a start date for the secondary, I would go with Dr. Pascarella's recommendation of March 1st.
I know one of the, one of the, part of the discussion that came up in our meeting yesterday, we had some food service employees there, and there was some concern there as far as preparation and getting some orders in and having, with some staff turnover, having new staff coming in for training. That was one of the suggestions that one of the employees had made was that. I'm just trying to update and give the, give the public some, some information as to what discussed. So if I'm repeating myself, I apologize.
Well, I will amend the second part of my motion, and that is for grade six through 12 to return to remote, or I'm sorry, hybrid learning, starting with the Monday, March the 1st.
Okay. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Angus. I can do a roll call now, Ms. Turnbull?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
Please. Pardon?
Now, that's just on, that's just on, that's just on the one I just put out there, right?
Yeah, this is.
That is correct.
Yep, this is secondary only.
This is secondary only.
Hybrid. Consistent with your, your prior hybrid model of effective March 1st.
Garnet and Gray every other day and every other Friday, correct? The Garnet and Gray days every other Friday.
That doesn't, that does not include the Friday for the.
No, that's, that would, that was, we talked about that for primary, the lower grades.
Okay, so Garnet and Gray, okay.
Return to the hybrid model, Ms. Young, as previously.
I'm all for it.
Okay. Can I, all right, I'll ask June for a roll call, please.
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Keough?
I think they should start March or February 22nd, but I'll vote yes for at least a March 1st start.
Mrs. Meganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving forward to the, the next motion, Mr. Campbell Long?
Well, I mean, I, I still like my motion.
That's fine. Keep it on the table.
Now, we can vote 100 times here, I would imagine, right?
Do we, we, we had Mrs. Curtis as, as a second for that. Is there, that still viable? I can ask for a roll call, right, Megan? We can go to the roll call.
Let Megan, why don't you go ahead and read that again?
Okay, go ahead, Megan.
So my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the motion is to continue the current hybrid model at the K through, the pre-K through five elementary level with the addition, with the new addition of every other Friday for cohorts in Garnet and Gray. Effective March 1st. I probably just added that in there for you, but we, we were talking about needing a date.
I would be good for February 22nd for the, for the, well, that week, you know, the beginning of, starting that week. I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but...
February 22nd works for me for those guys.
Okay, all right.
So with the first date of that week, yep, next.
Okay. All right. Can I have a roll call, please, June?
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keough?
Yes.
Mrs. Meganello?
Yes, but I have a question. Can I make a motion after this to?
Can I make a motion after this to see if we would be in agreement for the four days?
I think if you were looking. I think that motion would probably be a motion to amend the current one that's on the, that's, that's on the floor. We, you can certainly, you, we, we can go at it a second time.
She can make that, right?
Yeah.
amended.
Yeah, with, with the permission of the board, we can. We.
Okay, so I will say yes for at least that.
Mr. Metz?
No.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now, Megan, yes, I could say I'd like to amend our last motion and to have students in grades K to five return to school on March 1st on a four-day traditional Monday through Thursday and one day Friday remote for all students. And students who wish to stay all virtual are expected to attend school remotely daily.
Do I have a second anywhere?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mrs. Curtis, can I have a roll call, please?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again? I didn't hear it all.
Yes. So I would like to have a motion to have all students in grades K through five return to school on March 1st on a four-day traditional Monday through Thursday and one day Friday remote for all students. Students who wish to stay all virtual are expected to attend school remotely daily.
Thank you.
Excuse me, though, does that include our preschool?
Pre-K to five?
Well, yeah, would you include the preschool in that?
Yes.
Okay.
It was for that, sorry. So to have students in grade pre-K to five return to school on March 1st on a four day, on a four traditional day, Monday through Thursday, and one day Friday remote for all students. Students who wish to stay all virtual are expected to attend school remotely daily.
So I got a question before we go about this. Those 28 kids in their kindergarten class, how are you keeping them socially distanced?
I, I agree.
How would that go about that?
That's a concern of mine as well, um, one that I would be very hesitant to put staff and students in jeopardy without having a step-by-step plan in place to make sure that is feasible.
How many, how many?
Fisher, is it possible that we could perhaps maybe go for the elementary, like the next couple Fridays and then maybe at next month's board meeting, if everything looks good, then move to a four-day?
I think that's fair. I think a step-by-step process is something. Donor superintendent's recommendations as well, that would give some aim for planning. And that's my individual opinion.
I agree with you.
I'd like to see, I'd like to know, I, I know that we get the numbers every so often, but just to understand how many people are choosing for remote, even though we go to hybrid, because that would help.
Go a survey, Ms. Pedego?
Or just real-time information. Right, because we're already in hybrid. If we could kind of look back the last couple of weeks to say, you know, based on everything that's happened so far, you know, 14 children per class have chosen to go to show up for Garnet and Gray, the rest have remained full remote. That would give us a little bit of a, a better idea as well, because social distancing is my concern as well, and I think that would tackle what you, Mrs. President, and what Mr. Metz are asking.
Absolutely.
So I would like to know that, just, just round ballpark. I know it's not perfect.
Absolutely, no, so that's fair. That is fair, thank you. Okay, Ms. Turnbull?
I just, the only, the only point of information is that by voting yes, you affect a, like if a majority of the board votes yes to the current motion relative to elementary school, that will effectively resend the last, the last motion that you made, so just.
Correct, right, right. Any other questions, board members, before we take it to a roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry, one more question. If, if, for example, this motion does not pass, the previous motion that did pass, would families get a calendar to say, you know, this, this is, these are your Fridays?
Um, absolutely, we can, and, Dr. Pascarella, you could jump in here, but if we could get the principals to communicate when, whenever we are through here with making a decision on the future protocol as to what will be and letting the students and families know the situation and get the, the information if we send, send it out from the individual buildings to the students. I think that would be definitely a big help.
That would be great. Something helpful, because everyone has a lot going on, just to say.
Absolutely.
Right, you're attending this day, yeah.
We had a few teachers in the meeting mention, just, just so you know, uh, that they have some students that reach out and will want to know what days, so on and so forth, so. Yes, I think it's very important that we communicate, no matter what the decision is this evening, that we reiterate and resend out future communication. Thank you, Ms. Pedego. Okay, June, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Angus?
No.
Mr. Camp along?
No.
Mrs. Curtis?
No.
Mrs. Keough?
No.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
No.
Ms. Pedego?
No. No.
Yeah. Ms. Young?
No.
Mrs. Fisher?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. I would like to, before we move forward with the rest of the meeting, uh, just let the public know that we will continue as a committee and as a board to revisit and reevaluate the entire situation, and of course, we will, we will update every month at the board meetings, but please know that we are working very hard to get the, the students in as, as much as we possibly can, and will continue to do so. Thank you. Moving forward, I have a motion to accept or correct the minutes of the January 13th meet and discuss voting meeting, January 13th meet and discuss non-voting meeting, January 20th board meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving forward to the motion to accept the treasurer's report dated January 2021.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Keough. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Moving forward, we have no amendments or addendums to the agenda this evening. Uh, we have a recognition this evening. I'd like to introduce Ms. Chelsea Benedict, along with our, um, school board directors. We would like to recognize the student this evening, Chelsea.
Yes. Hi, everyone. Uh, I'm Chelsea Benedict, School Counselor for Grades nine and 10 at the high school. Uh, for the past few years, we have had the amazing opportunity in the high school counseling program and social studies team to pair with junior achievement in grades nine and 10, uh, to provide our students with career exploration programming, including JA, personal finance, and career success. Uh, the program coincides with continued partnerships this year with Columbia Gas. In addition, we also have this year's collaboration with Robert Morris University, which we're really excited for. Uh, each year, Junior Achievement recognizes districts, uh, in regards to their participation and collaboration with their programs. Uh, this year, it is my honor, due to our continued involvement in the ninth and 10th grade, to present the recognition um, of Ambridge High School as a standout high school by the Junior Achievement Organization. Um, and this is due to our continued partnership and programming each year. In addition, as an honor, they did recognize one of our very own outstanding students to interview honorees and public figures. Was at the Spirit of Enterprise Night event held this past January in Pittsburgh to discuss various career and chosen paths with today's leaders. Uh, this student was not only recognized for her high academics and hard work in and outside the classroom, but her overall commitment to continued leadership and success. I have not only had the honor to mentor and know this accomplished student for the past four years, but I've also seen her achieve great accomplishments, including high honors in all of her academics. She is the president of our Student Council, varsity cheer and competitive cheer athlete, and student founder of the first Black Student Union Club at Ambridge, as well as participation in the ACT SO program with Carter Sproul. Uh, her leadership qualities and hard work continue to shine in all that she does. Um, it is with my honor, on behalf of the Ambridge School District and our Board of Directors, to present and congratulate Ariana Thomas on her recognition as an outstanding student, uh, with our Junior Achievement Program and at Ambridge Area High School. Uh, in addition, tonight, she will be highlighting the very important aspects of Black History Month in collaboration as a founder of the Black Student Union at Ambridge Area School District. Uh, so I just want to congratulate again. Uh, she's a student that I've gotten to know over the four years, and she is an outstanding and amazing student that is going to go on and accomplish amazing things. Uh, so I would like to introduce to you, uh, Ariana Thomas on behalf of tonight and to congratulate her on her Junior Achievement Award.
Ariana, can you turn your camera on for us, honey?
Yes, I am currently on my phone, so my phone camera is on my laptop.
First of all, honey, I wanted to congratulate you on the wonderful success that you've accomplished so far, and I look forward to seeing your future success as well, along with the rest of the board of directors. And I am very, very proud to say that you represent Ambridge. Congratulations.
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 To hearing you speak, sweetie. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. I'm really happy about being chosen to give a speech today about Black History Month. As we all know, Black History Month is an honorary celebration to celebrate the contribute, the contributions of African-Americans in their importance to US history. Black History Month originally began as a week and was originally called Negro History Week, created in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson. And became a month-long celebration in 1926 as well. Carter G. Woodson was a noted African-American historian, scholar, educator, and publisher, and is more famously known as the father of black history. He was the second African-American to receive a doctorate from Harvard University after W E B Du Bois. Oftentimes, we recognize more prominent figures like Martin Luther King Jr., who is infamous for his "I Had a Dream" speech, Rosa Parks, who sparked the famous Montgomery Bus, Bus Boycott, Malcolm X, and Harriet Tubman. But there are many others that should be also, that should also be recognized during this month of tribute. People who have just as great of accomplishments as well. Shirley Kishem, the first African-American woman to be elected to the US House of Representatives. Jack Johnson, who was the first African-American man to hold the world heavyweight champion boxing title in 1908. John Mercer Langston, who was the first African-American man to become a lawyer when he passed the bar in Ohio in 1854, and then became one of the first African-Americans ever to be elected into public office in 1855. George Washington Carver, who was an eminent scientist and developed 300 derivative products from peanuts, along with cheese, milk, coffee, flour, ink, dyes, plastics, wood stains, soap, linoleum, medicinal oils. Along with, along with great people, we also recognize African-American-based organizations like the NAACP, who on February 12th of 2019 marked its 110th anniversary. The NAACP was spurred due to the growing racial violence in the early 20th century, particularly by 1908 race riots in Springfield, Illinois. Black History Month isn't just a month where we celebrate specific African-American's history, but where we celebrate all African-Americans who contributed to history and who've made an impact on lives and still are. We're celebrating all accomplishments of African-Americans all around that, all around that before, in the past, they wouldn't have been allowed to do. Thank you.
Very nice. Congratulations. That was very well written. Very well written.
Very well spoken. Thank you.
Very well spoken, and we're so proud of you. And I would, Dr. Pascarella, I would like to ask when the, um, high school students do return to school, and if possibly, uh, she could, if she's comfortable, read that, uh, during morning announcements, Chelsea, if you would be able to arrange that and, and Ariana is comfortable doing so. I would like to share it with the elementary buildings, too, if we could somehow, some way, we could collaborate on that, but I'm very proud to say you're from here, honey, and represent us. Congratulations. Great job, babe. Thanks for your presentation, hon.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving forward, uh, public comment in light of the state declared disaster emergency regarding agenda items only. In light of the state declared disaster emergency, the board has adopted modified public meeting and public comment processes, consistent with the Sunshine Law. These modified rules have been published in a newspaper of general circulation and on the district's website. Public comment will only be taken in written formats via email in advance of the meeting. Public comments received in advance will be circulated to the board. All public comments regarding agenda items will be read during the meeting. All other comments will be summarized during the meeting. All comments must include the resident property owner's name and address. June, do you have anything this evening?
I've read everything that I have.
Thank you. And just to clarify in regards to Ariana, I would also like, uh, not just the elementary schools, but the middle school level as well, up to high school. If we could make sure that that gets shared with everybody, Dr. Pascarella, I think that would be a great idea. I didn't want to skip that I, I failed in the middle school. All right, moving forward to committee reports, education and technology, Mrs. Manganello?
President, I move for the adoption of items one through seven on education and technology.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Angus. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Camp along?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keough?
Mary Jo, did you hear?
No.
Mrs. Keough?
I can't hear.
Mrs. Keough? Your education, technology, the adoption, that is one for stuff. And it was seconded by Mrs. Angus. Were you able to hear me clearly, Mrs. Keough?
I heard her say yes, I thought.
Did you hear her say yes?
That's what I said, too.
Okay.
It's a yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Mary Jo.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving forward to finance and budget, Ms. Pedego?
Thank you, Mrs. President. I move for the adoption of items one through five under finance and budget this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Camp along?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keough?
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving forward to building and grounds, Mr. Angus?
Yes, I move for the adoption of item number one as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Suck it.
Thank, that was, that, Mrs. Manganello, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Camp along?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keough?
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Y- yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving forward to athletics, Mr. Camp along?
I move for the adoption. I move for the adoption to number one.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second. I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Metz, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Campalong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keigho?
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, public relations, Mr. Metz?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, steering and rules, Mrs. Keigho?
Yes, I'd like to move for the adoption of items one through eight as presented, I'm sorry, it's ten.
Ten, yes.
As presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Curtis, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Campalong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keigho?
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, moving forward legislative, Ms. Young?
Nothing to vote on at this time.
Thank you, salary schedule and labor relations, Mrs. Curtis?
I move the, for the adoption, one through three this evening as presented.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Young, roll call, please.
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Campalong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keigho?
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, moving forward to personnel, Mr. Angus?
Uh, yes, this evening, I'll move for the adoption of items one through twenty-seven as presented.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Campalong, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Campalong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keigho?
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello? Yes, Ms., yes. Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, moving forward, uh, to the solicitor's report?
I have no action items for the board this evening, thank you.
Thank you, moving forward to the superintendent's report, Dr. Pascharella?
Only thing in addition to, uh, the presentation, as always, thank you to the staff and parents, thank you to the board and our to entire community, and also thank you to our presenter here this evening, she did a wonderful job, very proud of, of that, and it's always difficult to, to do that, but she really excelled in front of everybody, really enjoyed it, learned a lot from it, and look forward to sharing it with other people in the district, thank you for that.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Pascharella, can you touch on, as we discussed, um, in, in executive session, uh, Ms. Pedego's suggestion on education?
Just the, the current, the current numbers that we have.
In regards to.
The emotional.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Pedgo.
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah, I, I do remember, I apologize, I was searching for the mute button, so that was the delay, I do remember. I think what was, um, asked was just basically to kind of touch a little bit upon a couple of the, um, positions in particular. Um, there wa- there was one that was passed there where, um, as an example, to, to cite one would be at Economy Elementary and really looking at, you know, eliminate, eliminate the emotional support and rather combining that than with the current learning support. Part of the reason there was, uh, you know, someone could move in or could qualify, but at a given point, with the students transitioning up to the middle school, doesn't appear that we would have any students, according to the principal and special ed director, that would, would, would be in that program, so that was one that wanted to be mentioned. That being said, we did combine it, because if we do have somebody qualify or somebody move in, we will be able to provide those emotional support services and combine that with the current caseload of the, um, current learning support at that grade level. And, um, that, that was the one, I think, in particular, you wanted me to share.
Yes, yeah, just to make sure that the community knows that in that particular case, there were zero students at this current moment, um, to be supported by petition. And I just think it's important for, for people to understand a little bit behind that, I mean, none of these things are, are easy. Um, so I appreciate your explanation, Dr. Pascharella, on what we're currently seeing from that perspective.
Yeah, that would be right, there, at this time, we don't anticipate any, any individuals right now for the, um, twenty-one, twenty-two school year in the program, but we do have a plan if somebody were to enter to absorb that and, and make sure the student provides some services, which I think was your other point, that a lot of times, when we look at the opening, closing of positions, um, we're also planning in, in learning support services at Highland to be able to offer the services necessary there as well, so I think we have to look at that, can we provide the student services with the, with the personnel that remains, and the answer, in my opinion, is yes, we would be able to meet those needs, so, thank you for allowing me to share that.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying, Dr. Pascharella. Okay, I have a motion on the floor to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Campalong, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, have a wonderful evening, thank you for attending.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.